Welcome to the September 18th meeting of the Murfreesboro City Council. Were there any public comments on our actionable items?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. And our prayer and pledge, Mr. Maxwell, please.
Thank you. Our heavenly Father, we thank you for this time together this evening. Please be with us and help us, guide us, and make the best decisions possible for all of the citizens of Murfreesboro, Tennessee. In your name we pray.
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, you have the consent agenda before you. Any questions?
Move for approval.
Second.
A motion is second. Please call the roll, Mr. Russell.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye. All right, we have some minutes from August 14th, then a workshop on the 21st, and a retreat, so we need to approve those minutes. Are there any additions or corrections to our minutes?
So move.
A motion is second, please call the roll. Mr. Russell?
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye. All right, we've got a couple of old business. Ordinance 25032, fiscal year budget amendment. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Motion is second, please call the roll.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye. All right, ordinance 25025, rezoning property along January Street. This is second and final reading.
Second.
Motion is second, please call the roll.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye. All right, new business, we've got a sewer allocation variance. Mr. Blomley?
Good evening, Vice Mayor Shacklet and City Council members. We have a sewer allocation variance tonight. It is for property located along the west side of Casey Lane, just to the north of New Salem Highway. If you imagine this rotated to the right 90 degrees, you would find at the bottom of the page, right here, you would find the Walmart Neighborhood Market. There's an apartment complex to the north, and another one across Casey Lane, a little bit further to the north. You actually have this item for rezoning on your October the 2nd agenda. The request is to rezone the property from OG and CF. It's been zoned OG and CF for a number of years without any activity, and the applicant, Reagan Smith, representing Lennar Homes, is requesting to rezone it to PUD for a town home development with 94 town home units and two commercial out parcels, as you can see on the exhibit in front of you. So that rezoning request is what's going to be before you on October the 2nd, but before that rezoning request gets to you, they have submitted a request for a sewer allocation variance. Under the proposed PUD zoning, four single-family unit equivalents would be allowed per acre, and this is 17.26 acres, allowing for approximately 69 single-family unit equivalents. So they are requesting a variance of 37 single-family unit equivalents with the 94 proposed town home units and the two commercial out parcels. One thing that I did want to mention is, and this is kind of a different way that they could have applied that would not have warranted a sewer allocation variance. If they had requested PRD zoning for the town home portion, which is allocated, seven SFUs and the commercial out parcels, and they would not have been required to obtain a variance, but since they requested PUD for the entire development, the PUD zoning only allows four SFUs per acre, which is why they have requested their variance. We've seen it done both ways, with the PUD, and sometimes the applicants break it up into PRD and PCD in order to avoid having to request the sewer allocation variance. But as it is, they would be requesting a 37 SFU sewer variance. The Water Resources Department finds that the system can handle the increased flow that would be generated by this development, and planning staff recommends that the requested variance is justified by the job creation and tax revenue. And if City Council approves the variance, we would recommend that it be conditioned upon council's approval of the companion zoning request, as one without the other would be moot. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Tyler Fisher with Reagan Smith is here, if you have any questions for him. He's representing the developer, Lennar. But before he's available for questions, Ms. Valerie Smith would like to make a brief presentation on the status of that sewer basin.
Good evening, Ms. Smith.
Good evening. Get it pulled up here. Okay. So I'll begin by saying that I'm not usually up here regarding variance requests, but with this basin, when I presented the sewer allocation report, I intended to and should have given you all an update on this basin, but turns out I got a second chance. We, the department, expended funds, both through our reserves and also, well, through reserves, and did an upgrade project for this basin at a total of $13.45 million. It was three projects in one. One of those projects was upsizing a 15-inch sewer main to a 24-inch sewer main at the downstream end of this basin, and it included a river crossing, and it's just north, it actually flows through the hidden river subdivision. That portion of the project was $3.7 million and was also needed for, to give us additional growth in the Salem-Barfield basin. This portion of the project was just a necessary project to happen. It was a tunnel underneath Salem Highway at the river. It wasn't tied to needing for additional growth, but we replaced the 36-inch Hobos pipe in that casing underneath Salem Highway because it was raised in the middle of the tunnel and was backing up sewer, so we had that at a $1.36 million expense. The most of the project was out Salem-Barfield, and you can see by the green line, we replaced almost 8,900 and upsized almost a little over 8,900 feet of gravity sewer in between 12-inch and 21-inch for that full length. $8.39 million was the expense for this green line, coupled with the $3.7 million expense at the downstream end that I just showed you about. These two projects combined allowed us to have about 3,473 single-family unit connections in the basin that you see here in blue and also in the orange hatched area, both inside and outside city limits. January of 2023, initially, there was 979 acres of vacant land, both inside and outside the city, and taking that 3,473 single-family units and the acreage, dividing that out gave us an average for all the land to be developed at 3.5 single-family units per acre. So I'm kind of reverting back to the sewer allocation report. This is an as-is model for this basin. Now, what you're seeing here is the full basin and not just the Salem-Barfield area. So I just kind of wanted to remind you, we're still in good shape at the basin wide, but the sub-basin that we did the improvements in does have limitations. And this is the 2B model. The as-is model was 4,686 connections, and the 2B model was 5,534 connections, and this is at the very downstream end of the basin. So fast forward to July 2025, now there's only 208 acres inside the city that remain developable, large tracts, and those are shown in the orange. You can see kind of in the Casey Lane area, I don't know how to do the, it's labeled 15A, 15B parcel, and that is the Casey Lane PUD request today. Remaining undeveloped is the orange inside the city limits, and then there's about 425 acres outside the city limits, and that's the orange hatched area that you saw before, kind of at the bottom of the screen. So Casey Lane PUD development, their current zoning, as Matthew stated, gives them 43 single-family units per acre. We, the proposed zoning of PUD gives them 69, and then they are asking for additional up to 106 SFUs. So from current zoning to the proposed zoning, it's 146% increase in density or units. So this kind of brings me to this table. The remaining connections, this is a table of remaining connections. We started out at 3,473. Site plans approved by planning through July of 2025. Total about 774 single-family units. Subtracting that from the 3,473 gives you 2,699. Total paid reservations, and that 744 includes paid reservations for a project named Salem Town Town Homes and Prater, there's two different Prater Farms projects, one's Town Homes, one is single-family, but they reserved sewer capacity for 391 units. So in addition to those, those were all approved by planning. Total paid reservations that don't have approved plans right now is the Still Waters Development that is close to the Bell Tower Apartments that have been approved, further out Salem Highway, but also north of Salem Highway and west of the Walmart. So they have reserved, even though they don't have an approved plan, they have reserved based on their current zoning and acreage because they didn't want to lose the ability to develop, and you all have seen that plan before. It was very high density, had some commercial development, but it was also like senior apartments and apartments. So that was tabled, and I think they're redoing their development and will come back at a later date. If you take their reservation off, it leaves 2,242, and then today, if the PUD is, if the variance request is approved, we will have 2,136 units left in the basin to serve the 208 acres inside the city limits and approximately 425 outside the city limits. So I kind of went a little further in the table. Remaining developable acreage inside the city limits using the current zoning, that's not any zoning requests to allow anything dense, more dense, gives you 971 units for remaining 1,165 single-family units. If we gave everybody 146% increase, that would total 1,417 single-family units, and subtracting that from the 2,136 would be 719 remaining. That's just for inside the city. That does not leave but 719 for acreage outside the city limits, assuming that the 425 acres developed at 3.5 single-family units per acre, there would be, that gives you 1,488, but yet we only have 719 remaining. So just kind of giving the full picture of what's left in the basin, knowing that we planned on it developing at an average of 3.5 single-family units per acre. So I just wanted to present that to you so you would have all the information of what connections are, not even connections, their single-family unit equivalents remaining in the basin. Wanted you to have all of that information in order to make a well-educated decision. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
No question, just a general comment. This is probably one of the larger, I guess, variances, and then it sets up the potential down the road with the math that you just implied, and, you know, we've got some council members, I guess, that are out, they've got, had personal conflicts, sickness. I'd feel better, you know, that we had a full council, six here, seven here, before we voted on such a large variance that could set a precedent and really eat up a lot of connections. So I'd rather, I guess, make a motion to table this, to whenever this other item comes up that's tied to it anyway, and that way you've got a full council to weigh in on it. So my motion would be to table this until October the 2nd.
All right, we have a motion to table, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion is second, please call the roll.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Mr. Wade? Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye. All right, we have before us, thank you very much, Ms. Smith, and Mr. Blomley too. We have 25R-21, updating city social media and internet posting policy. Good evening.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council. I'm John Lance, I'm representing Communications Department tonight. Alan is not available to be here tonight. I'm the web guy and also handle some other projects within the department. Bringing you tonight, 25R-21, to update the city's social media and internet posting policy. The original social media and internet posting policy was adopted back in 2011, and that was Resolution 11RO4. The updated policy will provide clear definition of inappropriate content that should not be posted on city-managed websites or social media platforms. It also outlines what constitutes inappropriate social media public comments that are not protected by the First Amendment, which may be removed along with proper procedures on how to do that. The policy does continue to align with the city's records retention and public record request requirements, and we're asking council to approve 25R-21. Now I can answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second, please call the roll.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye. Thank you very much. All right, Resolution 25R-26, Schools Fiscal Year 26 Budget Amendment Number One. Dr. Duke?
Good afternoon.
Good evening.
Vice Mayor and Council, glad to see you tonight. On September 9th, the Murfreesboro City School Board approved FY26 Budget Amendment Number One to recognize new revenue in the amount of $123,901. This new revenue was for the Early Literacy Pre-K Teacher Grant stipend and a Title X McKinney Vento grant stipend, which serves our students who are experiencing homelessness. The new revenue will have related expenditures covering stipends for pre-k teachers who completed a training, as well as corresponding expenditures related to our McKinney Vento program, again for students who are experiencing homelessness. We are recommending approval of the $123,901, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Second.
Motion is second, please call the roll.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye. Thank you, Dr. Duke. All right, Joint Resolution 25R-27, TriStar and Ascension St. Thomas-Murfreesboro Emergency Room. Mr. Goh?
Yes, sir, Vice Mayor, Council, thank you. What you have before you tonight is a resolution that supports the establishment of two freestanding emergency rooms, one from TriStar, HCA TriStar Health, and the other from Ascension St. Thomas. They have both applied for certificates of need through the Tennessee Health Facilities Commission, and they're requesting your support.
Sounds good, move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second, please call the roll.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye. Thank you. Resolution 25R-28, authorizing participation in settlements with Purdue Pharma and other opioid manufacturers. Mr. Tucker?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Members of council, this resolution, as Vice Mayor said, would authorize the city to participate in the state of Tennessee's settlement with Purdue Pharma and eight other opioid manufacturers. The City Council has approved similar settlements with distributors and some manufacturers back in 2021, 2023, and 2024. This is part of a national settlement, and there's a formula for the amount of Tennessee settlement and then how those, the settlement funds are distributed to the state and to counties and participating municipalities over the course of 15 years. The total maximum payments to Tennessee and qualifying local government entities under the Purdue Pharma settlement agreement would exceed $122 million, and the payments under the other eight manufacturer settlements would be $19 million. If my math is, just for example, the percentage of that amount that I believe would be allocated of the Purdue Pharma is .0072%, but over 15 years, that comes out to be about $878,000 that would be coming to the city, and there are restrictions in terms of how the city can spend that money. And approval of this resolution is necessary to participate in the settlement, and City Council needs to approve this resolution before September 30th to participate. Happy to answer any questions.
So $878,000 in total?
Yeah, over the course of 15 years, if my math is correct, yes. So I just took that percentage and applied it to that $122 million.
So I'll abstain, and the reason I'm going to abstain is because, you know, my son died of an opioid overdose, and so their $878,000 is nothing. So that's all I got to say.
All right. Do we have a motion?
If he abstains, we don't have enough members to vote, correct?
If he abstains, you have, and there are three votes in favor, the resolution would pass.
Who negotiated this?
This was negotiated nationally. It was negotiated by the Tennessee Attorney General's Office, but this was not negotiated by the city. This is a part of a national class action settlement. So that, you know, the $122 million is part of a billions of dollars settlement nationally. I don't know what, off the top of my head, what the total amount of that settlement is.
Does this preclude any other further joining with any other litigation?
Well, this would settle the claims that the municipalities would have, that the city of Murfreesboro might have against...
Those eight and...
These against Purdue Pharma or...
One of the eight.
Yes. Yeah, and I, the, this is a process, the result of years of litigation, and in fact, the Purdue Pharma settlement, especially the part involving the Sackler family, went all the way to the Supreme Court, and the settlement was rejected by the Supreme Court, and it went back down. So this is the second settlement. It's my recommendation that...
We join.
That the city join the settlement. As it has in the settlements with, excuse me, various distributors of pharmaceuticals, you know, CVS, Kroger, other pharmacies.
And the dollars can't be just put in the general fund, they've got to address the issue of something addressed.
Right, we've used some of that for educational programs, I think we've used that some, correct me if I'm wrong. Yeah, I thought, yeah, with the co-responder program.
Okay.
So that is an eligible purpose. And so this, my understanding is Rutherford County, you know, Rutherford County is participating, Smyrna is participating, so this is not, there is more money coming into Rutherford County, this is just the amount that would be paid to the city. And again, the total amount to this, in order for the state to get to $122 million in the case of the Purdue Pharma settlement, that's based on how many local entities participate in the settlement.
Have a motion, second, please call the roll.
Mr. Maxwell?
Abstain.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye. All right, Air Traffic Control Tower Siding Study Grant, Mr. Gurk.
Vice Mayor, members of the City Council, bring to unite the state grant to complete the site analysis and report for the siding of a proposed tower, air traffic control tower at the Murfreesboro Airport. The grant is for $145,700. It's 90% federal, 5% state, and our 5% local, which is $7,825, and that will be paid through the airport fund. If you have any questions, I'll take it at this time.
Motion is second, please call the roll.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye. Second round.
All right, so that's the money. Now I'm going to show you how we're going to spend it.
Air Traffic Control Tower Siding Study Authorization.
Yeah. So the second item is the work authorization with Barge Design Solutions to conduct the survey studies and all the paperwork and forms that the FAA requires us to fill out. And again, that will be paid for through that grant. That work authorization is for $63,589. I'll be glad to answer any questions you have.
So move.
Second.
Motion is second, please call the roll.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye. All right, Old Fort Ballpark, thank you, Mr. Gurk. We'll see you again in a minute. You are so good, we need a reprieve. Old Fort Ballpark Parking Renovation Change Order Two. And Mr. Hennessy?
Good evening. Ballfield parking renovations at Old Fort Park consist of an artificial turf playing field and replacing all the ballfield amenities along with stormwater drainage improvements by perviable pavers in the parking area. Change Order Number Two officially includes the contingency items encountered in August and adds six days to the contract time. The contingency items included are to undercut and backfill areas at the parking area in the ballfield and for extra concrete at the batting cage. The total for these contingency items is $46,817 and does not change the total contract amount. This leaves a remaining contingency balance of $13,984. The completion date for the project is now anticipated to be November 9th. Thank you for the opportunity and happy to answer any questions.
So move. Hey, what's that cost again? Did you say $130,000?
$13,900.
So moved. Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye. Thank you. It's looking good out there, by the way. I've been by there a couple of times. All right, we're back up again. Updating Employee Handbook Section 6013 regarding social media and website guidelines.
Yes, again, Vice Mayor and Council, this is similar to the resolution, but this will update the Handbook Section 6013 regarding social media and website guidelines. The social media and website guidelines were originally adopted in 2013, and this updated policy will provide clear definitions of inappropriate content that should not be posted on city-managed websites or social media platforms. Again, it will align with the city's records retention and public records request requirements. And we're asking council to approve this resolution, or, um, this item.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye. All right, a new face. Health Benefit Service Agreements for 2026, Mr. Wilson.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and council members. Hope all is well. I have before you two service agreements related to our health benefits plans. The first is through Blue Cross and Blue Shield regarding our medical and vision plans. It's a multi-year agreement covering five years. First year cost is a little over $581,000. Five-year total is about a little bit, little bit over $3 million. The vision portion of the plan will be covered by the employees. I am happy to say that we do have a savings for this plan compared to our current agreement, which is a little bit under $200,000. The second agreement is with Delta Dental to cover our dental coverage. It is also a multi-year agreement. It, uh, it's a three-year agreement, total cost is three, $240,000. The first year cost is a little under $80,000. A little bit increased compared to our current agreement, which is about $4,200 compared to where we are today. Uh, the FY 26 budget, uh, insurance fund plan will cover the cost for the first year, and then the future operating costs will also be covered by future, uh, insurance funds. With that said, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have regarding these plans, and I'm asking for your approval.
What's driving the decrease? It's driving, that's a pretty significant decrease, like is it...
On the medical?
Is it a cut in services that they're doing? Is it a cut in whatever it is that they're, previously were doing? Like, that's a pretty big drop.
Excellent question. No, there's, there's no cut in service. Actually, there's an increase in service. Blue Cross and Blue Shield, you know, as you know, we've been, been partnering with them for several years now, and I think what they did, they stepped up to, to ensure that they continue to have our agreement going forward. So, they, I guess, kind of put the pencil to the, uh, to the paper and, and, and got very creative and, and decreased the cost.
So, they're worried about competition?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, fair enough.
Good question.
All right, any other questions? Do they have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye. All right, we come to the Chief Bowen portion of our evening's entertainment. Pedestrian Enforcement and Education Grant, Chief Bowen.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Vice Mayor, members of the council. For your consideration, this evening is a request to approve a grant contract between the Murphysboro Police Department and the Tennessee Highway Safety Office. MPD has been awarded $60,000 for the THSO FY 26 pedestrian enforcement and in education grant. This program provides funding for pedestrian safety initiatives, including enforcement and education, with the overall goal of reducing vehicle versus pedestrian accidents. The majority of the funding will be used to offset overtime wages for officers who participate in pedestrian safety efforts. $17,000, excuse me, $17,000 from the grant funds will be used to purchase mobile, a mobile messaging trailer. The department's income and expenses will increase by the grand award of $60,000, and no matching funds are required. At this time, I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye. Amendment number one of the agreement with Flock Group.
Yes, sir. For your consideration, this evening is a request to approve a contract amendment, uh, for Flock cameras and services. Council approved the agreement for the initial purchase of Flock cameras on July 31st, 2025. This amendment provides for an additional 34 LPR cameras and 26 video cameras to be installed in or around city parks and greenways. The proposed contract is for a three-year subscription with a total cost of $517,832, payable in annual installments. The initial spent, expense for year one is $195,515. $515 is provided for in the department's FY 26 operating budgets. The following subsequent years will be budgeted accordingly in, uh, operating budgets. At this time, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
What's the impact you're seeing, Chief, with this technology?
Uh, solvability has really improved. I see that we're spending, uh, we're saving investigator time by being able to obtain this information from, from, uh, these, uh, tech, uh, technology pieces. Uh, one of the things that we had discussed is, hey, can we get the park system incorporated into our real-time crime center? So, with the addition of these particular pieces of technology, we are going to incorporate them with what we've already got in place, and like I said, hopefully help us with solvability and identifying issues in and around the parks.
Okay.
And Chief, I know you've answered this before, just for the people in the audience, these are not 24-hour monitored or anything like that. This is, if something happens, we go back and look at these systems and give us an idea about what was going on in that area. They're not like somebody sitting there watching and seeing what Austin Maxwell's doing, uh, and following Austin Maxwell. These are, these are after a crime is committed, we go back and ver, look at this.
Yes, sir. The primary purpose of these devices, uh, we go back if something's committed and we need to, uh, retrieve data. If we know that a LPR was near a crime scene, or if we know a camera was near a crime scene, we can go back to those sources and, and collect that information. And, uh, the LPRs, they do other things, you know, they provide us with stolen vehicle information through their internet system. If you have Amber Alerts, uh, Silver Alerts, things like that, they'll also hit on items like that. Retention periods, 30 days on those, so we don't keep them forever. And one of the things I always emphasize is not everyone at the agency has access to this information. We have crime analysts, we have a small group of people that access this information, and if you need to access the information, you have to, you have to basically do an in-house, uh, report and saying, hey, I need this information, here's why I need it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any more questions? Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye. Amendment number four to purchasing agreement with Axon.
Yes, sir. For your consideration, excuse me, I'm getting over cold, is a request to approve an amendment to the master services and purchasing agreement with Axon Enterprises. Council approved the initial 10-year contract with Axon for the purchase of body cameras and in-car cameras on September 2nd, 2022. MPD requires an additional 20 body worn cameras due to the addition of sworn officers. We would also like for your, uh, we also ask for your approval to purchase the auto tagging feature that, uh, that comes with, uh, that's optional with Axon products. Auto tagging, uh, automates how video evidence is categorized and linked to incidents. It would prove, improve our efficiency and accuracy in evidence management. Uh, this particular amendment adds $35,017 for body worn cameras and $41,220 for the auto tagging feature annually, and that would apply to the remainder of the, uh, contract. The prorated FY 26 expense would be $58,728, and is provided for in the, uh, department's operating budget. At this time, I can answer any questions you may have.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye. Change order to, uh, shared costs for repairs of the fire range at the Rutherford County Sheriff's Office, Chief Bowen.
Yes, sir. For your consideration, is a request to approve additional shared costs as a result of change orders for range improvements at the Rutherford County Sheriff's Department. Uh, the council approved the shared expense of repairs to the Rutherford County Sheriff's Office fire range on March 27th, 2025. The project is nearing completion, and we have been informed of three change orders that have a combined total cost of $42,212. Pursuant to the agreement with the Rutherford County Sheriff's Office, we're asking for the approval of an additional $21,106 pering in our total shared cost of $426,253. The additional expense will be funded by the department's FY 26 operating budget. At this time, I can answer any questions.
All right, any questions?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye. All right, the MOU with the town of Smyrna and Rutherford County.
Yes, sir. Uh, if, some of you may remember, this is a workshop item last week, and, uh, basically, for your consideration, is a request to approve a MOU between the city, the town of Smyrna, and Rutherford County to share a cost of a study to explore the potential benefits of a consolidated emergency communication center. Currently, multiple jurisdictions within, within Rutherford County operate their own public safety emergencies, communicate, emergency communication centers, and recognizing the potential for increased efficiency and enhanced service delivery, the parties have agreed to collaborate on a study that will evaluate the feasibility and benefits of unifying these services. The MOU will allow parties to share in the cost of the study with a maximum cost of $35,000 each. Purchasing guidelines will be followed once the MOU is executed by all parties, and, uh, this would also be funded through the department's FY 26 operating budget.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye. All right, Community Traffic Safety Enforcement and Education Grant Contract, Chief?
Yes, sir. For your consideration, is a request to approve a grant contract between the Murphysboro Police Department and the Tennessee Highway Safety Office. MPD has been awarded $150,000 for the THSO FY 26 Community Traffic Safety Enforcement and Education Grant. This program provides funding for traffic safety education and enforcement initiatives. The department will use most of the funding to offset overtime wages for officers who participate in program activities. $45,000 from the grant funds will be used to purchase mobile ticket printers for police vehicles. Uh, the department's income and expenses will increase by the grand award of $150,000, and no matching funds are required. At this time, I'll be delighted to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
That's all I got.
Yes, sir.
Let's talk about roads.
Yes.
All right. Contract to amend the TDOT for matching transit facility funds, Mr. Bashir.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and council members. The Transportation Department is recommending your approval of an amendment to one of our two state transit facility matching contracts. As we near the end of the cost associated with the construction of the transit facility, we are maximizing our federal and state funds to minimize the local match. Over the next few months, additional amendments will be introduced to achieve this goal for the city. This amendment adds $34,468 to the original state contract and is accounted for in the department's FY 26 operating budget. So, again, the Transportation Department recommends your approval of this amendment, and I'll be happy to answer your questions.
All right, any questions?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Bashir. All right, the Wharfhead Works recommissioning, SSR to amend number one. Ms. Smith?
Amendment number one.
You're back.
So, the council has previously, uh, approved a task order for the recommissioning of our old Headworks building. It operated between 1998 and 2017, and at the time in 2017, the department built a new Headworks building. So, during the design phase, it was determined that this building wasn't built per NFPA for Class 1 Division 2, which is, uh, explosion proof for all of the equipment. And so, we have asked SSR to go back kind of to the drawing board to give us options. One of those options, uh, well, let me back up. The, to get the rating of Class 1 Division 2 for explosion proof for all of the equipment that was there, was it gonna be another $2 million added to the project? So, hence the reason why we asked SSR to go back and give us some options. Those options included, uh, opening up, and you'll see in this slide, opening up portions of the building, and you'll see in red, to, uh, at, you know, open air, where air can flow through the building, um, and get plenty of air changes, and you wouldn't have to put in explosion-proof equipment. So, with that redesign, um, that we are asking for an amendment, number one, to the task order. And so, the Headworks is definitely needed. Uh, it will provide flexibility and redundancy for our treatment facility. Uh, it's needed for our expansion that we hope to, uh, complete or start in 2030. And so, in addition to the redesign of the Headworks to be open air, the, there will also be studies done, uh, for how we would connect the future Cherry Lane force mains to the Headworks buildings, uh, and also a new vacuum truck loadout area where vacuum trucks can go and dump once they've pumped out of the sewer. So, we request an amendment, uh, in the amount of $402,277, which would bring the total task order up to 1.17 million, thereabout. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, any questions?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, please call the roll.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye. All right, save on barfield sewer upgrades, final change order?
Yep, so...
Always nice to hear.
Explained the whole project to you all previously, or, earlier tonight. Uh, the construction is complete. The original bid was $13.9 million. Contractor, we did not use all of the quantities in that project, and so we have a deductive change order in the amount of $490,653 for a final contract price of $13,446,319. And we request approval of the final change order.
Saving money.
I was gonna say, it's a hard one to get in.
That's right.
A motion for it.
So moved.
Got a motion and a...
Second.
And a second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Aye. All right, Mr. Gore, agreement for intergovernmental services.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Vice Mayor, council, um, almost the last item, or maybe the last item. This is an agreement that is a renewal, uh, with Ramsey Fair, Russell and Smith LLC for intergovernmental services, um, for legislative monitoring and lobbying services at the General Assembly. We have, um, employed this, this, uh, firm for several years now. They, the expense of $50,000 is, they've held that flat now for several years, there's no increase. Uh, I would make a point to note, though, that, uh, under the, they, we got a revised contract today, and it was RFRS Government Relations. Still the same firm, just a different name, but, um, I just wanted to point that out to you, and I'm available for any questions. They've, they've proven to be very valuable during the legislative sessions in the past several years.
Okay, we've got a motion.
Second.
And a second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet?
Okay, we've got a motion.
Second.
And a second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Maxwell?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye. Any board and commission appointments? I don't see any. Licensing, were there any licensing, any bills to be paid?
Yes, sir.